Good evening, this is Tuesday, August 19th. This is the meeting of the Reinebeck Central School District Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion to appoint Mehk to Disco Kirk to attend?
Hello.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. All who's in favor? Thank you, that motion passes. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 29, 2014 regular meeting?
Hello.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. All who's in favor? Actually, is there any discussion on that? Uh, have intentions. First. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th? May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2014 special meeting?
Hello.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All who's in favor? Thank you, that motion passes. Uh, is there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of discussion. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation with Dan Marvin-Prentz on the 2014-15 Achievement Data Report. Yeah.
With those chairs still up?
A little bump right there.
You're still seeing the gavel, I think.
What am I seeing?
Oh, you're seeing the chair, I think.
Oh, you're right, it's the back of the chair. No? Oh, it must be the pile.
Huh? Yeah, just moved my name plate.
It's not that either.
It's the name plate.
It's the name plate.
Alright. Don't feel better enough? Make sure you position the microphone where it'll pick up, so it'll report.
Have intentions of hiring messy desk now, please, and no indication of my organization's skill.
Never seen my office.
Okay. Machineery works. Yep. Oh!
Oops.
Miracles. Okay, we're gonna serve a lot of masters here in quick hurry, so what I've decided to do is, although I'm such a creature of head, I normally do this one way every single time, but since we didn't do it last year, I'm gonna kind of turn pins around, so I'm gonna jump to the end of what I normally do, tell you the story and the narrative of everything that follows after that, and I just have two pieces of information. One is, all of the information that's here is contained in that student achievement report that you received. The slides that I'm going to refer to are on that PowerPoint presentation at your seat, so that you can follow along with me, thinking that it would just be easier for you to track along if you are more interested in the paper or if it's been already produced.
The data is the same.
The data is the same, and you just asked me if it was the same, and I said, "I hope so." Because I transferred from one place to another, so, you know, I'm always hopeful that I did it correctly, but please feel free to correct me. Uh, so, this is an overview of student achievement, it's embedded in the REAMS reform agenda, it is comprising the student achievement data from two years, '13 and '14. Uh, we kind of condensed it into two years all at once, because we just completed '13-14, it made no sense to me to kind of go back to '12-'13, talk through that, and then come back here in another couple months and talk about '13-14, since we have most of that information, not all of it, I've crunched some numbers and tried to verify, but most of the stuff on '13-14 is in, and it's pretty accurate at this point, so I'm pretty comfortable with what's in here. So, I always embed my remarks generally in the kind of things that I care about, and, you know, I feel like, lo these many years ago, when we went through the Conference of District Education Planning Process and developed, you know, a mission, vision, and core values, you know, and the more I go back to look at them, you know, I just have to suggest to everyone that they do hold up over time, and they really do state what really matters about education in this town and in this school district, and that kind of higher aspirational values and sense of mission and purpose that we all kind of aspire to, and I see that in evidence, and I feel like I need to always mention that, that we talk generally about the generosity of spirit and passion for learning and ultimate success for every student, irrespective of what life may hold for that student. You know, our sense of vision is embedded in not just a narrow test-based accountability, and I always want to preface my remarks about test-based accountability by saying, "This is not the whole story," and I feel like in our current sort of assessment mania, sort of educational context, too much of that is missed, and so, I feel like we got a lot of things right by thinking about kids as self-directed learners, complex thinkers, collaborative workers, quality producers, community contributors, and particularly in this day and age, it seems to me ethical decision-makers should be central to the kind of ways in which we interact with each other in this particular educational community. I always try to pick one value that I think is particularly important to the moment, and I feel like in a time when education is so besieged by critics, who are just dashing away at every foundation of what we might understand to be public education, there seems to be a dearth of recognition and acknowledgement and celebration of success, being large or small, and, you know, I used to be a, in a previous life, I was a P for Service consultant, I used to do a lot of consultant work around student climate and behavior plans and codes of conduct and stuff like that, and one of the things I always used to emphasize is, you can't punish a kid into being good, and you can't punish a system into being good, you can't use a compliance model to get someone to achieve the kind of values and mission and vision that we aspire to in this district, and how you do that is by identifying and nurturing success, and by meeting challenges by creating cultures of collaboration, and meeting challenges by creating resources, and empowering the persons that are in that system. That's how you create strong, robust educational communities, and it starts by recognizing those places where you are successful, and then celebrating those things and acknowledging those things, and so I think it's an important value that we picked out on the list, and I'm really glad it's there. So, in the context of educational assessment, unfortunately, since, you know, around 99, 2000s, school year in education, we're in the education accountability business. This is what we do for a living. It's part of the discourse of public education, but one of the things I think is important when you start talking about educational assessment is to try to embed that in what educational assessment actually is in the first place, because then when you're talking about it, it can kind of make some kind of sense, because it's contextualized. So, it is a, it's a special type of what I call an evidentiary argument, in which you reasoning about a handful of particular things that students say do, make, or to do what? Well, to more broadly cast some valid and reliable inferences about what the student knows, what they've accomplished, or what they're apt to do in the future, so, it's a really, it's a, there's two really key phrases in here. One is this idea, it's an evidentiary argument, you're assembling evidence, you're trying to make a plan, and the second is, you're trying to infer from that evidence, well, what does that mean? What is that telling you? And so, you'll hear a lot of this discourse of public education, "Well, if test scores are poor, it must be that there are bad teachers, bad administrators, bad schools." So, that's what I call inferring, or inferring from that, but is that a valid and reliable inference? And I think we need to think more deeply about these things, and think more carefully about what tests can and can't do. Uh, so, I like to say, you know, you don't want to do too much with testing, and you don't want to do too little, you want to find that sort of just right place with using educational assessment for appropriate use within the educational context. You don't want to overtest, and you don't want to under-assess. So, why do we do it in the first place? Well, we, it guides the process of improving and changing education in the modern era to a large degree. Like it or not, that is the regime that we do business in. But really, more broadly, it determines the success of individuals, programs, instruction, identified subgroups. It really falls into a couple of categories, it's what I call summative assessment versus formative assessment, and I'm gonna make a little hay out of this as I proceed through the presentation. Summative assessment is really the assessment of learning. It's telling you, okay, at the end of a course of instruction or instructional sequence, this is what the student knows and can do. Districts are now being asked to use summative assessments for purposes of evaluating teachers, evaluating principals, as well as, in the old days, programs and so on and so forth. So, we are in the new era, really quite literal, in using tests for that which they were never designed. So, it's an interesting area, because we're doing a lot of this inferential reasoning about the result of these tests, and sometimes I see that we are over-infering, and that we're making a lot of what I call high inference judgments about this data. You know, we're inferring on a pretty scant amount of information about a student, about what that student may know or be able to do in the first place, and so, I urge caution, I urge multiple points of data, I like trend lines over time, I like to think about these things in a much more careful way before I just run off and draw a lot of unimportant conclusions. So, I try to create information that guides intervention and policymaking, you try to use district and school level information about achievements, so that you can see whether you're achieving your goals or not, and what you may need to change, so that's where we talk about formative assessment. And what that means is, really, assessment for learning. So, as a student is going through their educational experience, you want to dipstick, okay, is what I'm doing working? Is it not working? Am I reaching that student, and am I not? And that kind of assessment actually is some of the best, what I call low inference, information about kids, because it tends to use classroom-based assessments, curriculum-based measurements, and so on and so forth in the classroom. So, when we do this kind of presentation, we're really backing out that lens pretty wide, and we're going into that high inference area. We're not in that low inference right inside the classroom, up close area in the formative assessment world, we're more in the summative assessment world. Uh, so, individual student information about achievement with respect to various goals by the district are critical, because you need to know, if you're setting goals, are the kids moving in the direction that you need them to move in? So, here's the picture, that's why I flipped this thing this time, it might be interesting to think of, just while. So, this is the '13-'14 data, so, what to make of English minor jobs, 36% of kids last year, this is in June, uh, you know, on the ELA test, third grade level, passed the test supposedly, according to the proficiency standards that the state has now set.
You're talking about state results, not Reinebeck's school district results?
That's right. Well, no, no, this is Reinebeck's third grade class.
Oh, okay.
This last June.
Okay.
Yep. Grade four, 54%, grade five, 41%, grade six, 51%, grade seven, 49%, grade eight, 55%. Math, same thing, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 39%, and so on, all the way up to 44%. Science, it was grade four, 100% of the kids passed the grade four, the science test, and 89% of the eighth grade class passed the science test. Now, that same fourth grade class, just so you know, only 54% of them passed the English minor jobs test, and only 45% of them passed the math test, but all of them passed the science test. So, the only reason I'm gonna throw that slide up there is to say to you, you could sit here and infer about that a lot, I could get a whole room full of people, and everybody could start doing a lot of this high inference talk, is basically what I'm saying. Let me add some complexity to that. This is the second year that this particular testing regime was given to these students, okay? Last year was the first year, this year was the second year. They did a rushed implementation of the Common Core learning standards in the state of New York for purposes of the Race to the Top, so, most of these students who sat for these quote-unquote "more rigorous" exams only had a couple of years to prepare for this level of rigor, and we had essentially two and a half to three instructional cycles to roll over an entire curriculum after Race to the Top circuit the grand. So, you can see how you can complicate these kinds of inferences by contextualize, it's the only reason I throw that slide up there. I could also do that in another way, I could talk about that comparatively, so I could do what I call the lead tables. You know, I could start comparing how we did against how the kids in the county did. Well, so, let me just tell you what that looks like. Those three grade levels there, six, seven, eight, in ELA, I believe, are either in the first or the second position in the county, same way in math, they're either in the first or the second position in the county, six, seven, eight. So, all of a sudden, now, those numbers look low, but comparatively, they actually are high compared to the rest of the county's performance. But, I could now say, well, wait a second, some districts have high numbers of economically disadvantaged kids, much more so than we do, they have different populations of special education students, and so, now I start changing the configuration of what those numbers mean. And so, I only throw this up to say, when you see educational data, you have to start to ask those kind of complicated questions before you draw any conclusions. So, I'm gonna do some, what we call Missouri confabulation, otherwise known as narrating for you. I'm gonna narrate what I think all this data means, okay? And not confabulating the data.
We were hoping for that.
So, now if you look at this, now we're gonna jump to the summative level in our educational programs, '13-'14, now these are REAMS exams, these things pass, this is high stakes business here, this is kids needing to take and pass these tests for purposes of graduation, right? I just showed you a previous chart, now look at this chart. Look at the history of the ELA regions at grade 11, since back to '08-'09, I could take you back further if you needed to, but you get the idea just by looking at that chart right there. They run up in the 95 to 94% at the lowest percentage of passing. Integrated Algebra runs 97 all the way to 99% there. Algebra II-TRIG is one of the most rigorous courses, and that compares very favorably in terms of, that's the third course in the sequence. The second course in the sequence, Geometry, again, 96%. Global History, 93. U.S., 93. Earth Science, 89. Living Environment, 100%. If you look at that Chemistry, at 67% this year, you can see that is a statistical anomaly and an unfortunate outcome this year, and we've put in place some plans to support those kids in the next year, to make it possible for them to retake it next year, should they be interested, and we've also put some aggressive plans in place to improve the quality of the instructional program in that class. Physics, though, 94%. So, I want you to just juxtapose those two columns and numbers, and just think for a second, wait, okay, how do you make any sense out of that? So, let's talk a little bit, go ahead.
So, were the REAMS exams, like, altering any way, the way that the third grade tests were to, like, reflect the Common Core, or are there plans to?
The answer to that is yes, they are starting to incorporate, how shall I describe what they're doing now? Items that are aligned with the Common Core in the REAMS, with the plan to fully align in Algebra, which I'll talk about a little bit later. The Algebra Common Core was given for the first time this past June, second, third, maybe, and the ELA was also given. We elected to give the math, but not the ELA, and we're going to give that to the cohort that'll be ready in what will be, will be sophomore, so, two years from now. So, they will have a fully aligned Common Core assessment. Now, what's interesting about that is the first year, and I'll just let that cat out of the bag, all but one of the kids passed the Common Core Algebra exam the first time through, 99% of them, and the one student who didn't came to us very late in the year, and we didn't have much of a chance to help him, and that was the way it was. Now, again, I don't want to take away from the hard work of the kids, the hard work of the teachers, because, let me tell you, they all stepped up and did a great job responding to the demand, but I'm just sort of making this general point of looking at the formative data as the students come through the system versus the summative data at the end of the story.
I'm more of a, if you, I, we don't want to leave this slide, no.
I love this slide, too.
Just to jog our memories, that Integrated Algebra exam, which was based on the Common Core standards, the first year that exam was given, that was the same cohort of students with whom you and the building principals had that meeting in the fall, because there was quite a bit of concern about how the kids would adjust to successfully tackling that exam, so, somebody did something, okay?
Yeah, we feel pretty good about what we did, to put in place to support the kids, so, parents came out, we had a nice crowd, and a lot of good questions, and a lot of legitimate concerns that I think we all shared, and I don't think that was just the parents, I think we were feeling the same way at that point, but yeah, it played out better than we, I think, hoped for. So, again, I only show you SAT scores, why? Well, because if you look at Reinebeck's mean SAT scores, whether it's crypt reading, whether it's math, whether it's writing, on average, they're always above the New York State and national average, that's a standard thing, they always stay pretty consistent, they kind of go up and down over time, but they stay right in, right in within a statistical range that most of us, I think, are comfortable with. Another area of strength that you notice at the summative level, again, I'm trying to start to draw this contrast of formative as they come through the system, these same kids came, most of them came, all came through our system. So, if you look at the top up there, you know, all but 13% of the kids all got threes, fours, and fives on these AP exams, and we administered 159 of them. So, clearly, you know, you see this developmental progression as the kids mature, as they stay with us and go through our academic programs, they are well-prepared for a rigorous course of study in the end to high school. So, let's talk about that. Reinebeck High School continues to be designated by Washington Post as one of the top 5% of the highest schools in the country. How do they do that? Well, it's a graduation rate, college interculation, AP exams, to graduate, graduate rate, you know, it's sort of a ratio of how many exams you give to the number of kids who are eligible, average SAT scores, average AP scores, and number of AP courses. Annually, the graduation rate is above 90%, some years it's 95%, some years it's down near 90%, I think one year, in my memory, it was in the high 80s, 88 to 89. Almost always invariably, that group of kids, you know, in a cohort of around 100 kids, I'm only talking about a small number of kids, could get up to 90. They are, by percentage, kids who might be students with disabilities, they might be kids who have come into the system later, so they can, in their sophomore year, let's say, and have improved sufficient credits if they're lower than behind, there's a fair number of explanations for why that is, but even with those kinds of struggles, we're still above the 90% range. The two and four-year college benefit rate always is above 90% of our graduates. This year, the Reinebeck High School was designated as a reward high school, and so, what does that mean? Well, I'll try to make some kind of sense of, I'm trying to understand this, I have to tell you. I kept reading these charts, and I just, I don't see something wrong with me, because I just read these things that the state writes, and I just cannot understand, but I finally figured this one out, so I feel good about that. So, the top 20% in this state, so you had to be above the 80th percentile, on average, in your combined ELA math scores for 11, 12, and 12, 13. Okay, so you had to be in the top 20% of the state, your graduation rate had to stay above 80%, oh, and back on this 20%, there couldn't be any large gaps between disaggregated accountability groups, they call them, like economically disadvantaged, special ed, and so on and so forth. So, everybody, it was kind of like raise all boats, kind of a symmetric, if you will, and you had to be, so, graduation rate above 80%, which as I just mentioned, is typically above 90, you also had to have a state average for regions with advanced designation score, so, I think it was 41% of the graduates that year had advanced designation. How do you get that? Well, typically, you have to take and pass five REAMS exams and earn 22 credits in order to graduate from high school. In order to be advanced designation, you have to do, finish up your sequence in math, so typically you do Geometry and Algebra II-TRIG, and then you also usually pick up an extra couple of science, like Earth, Biophysics, Chem, so, you fill out that resume with additional rigorous courses, and that puts you in a position to get a REAMS diploma with an advanced designation. So, Reinebeck High School was above the state average for that, for the years that were accounted for in 11, 12, and 12, 13, therefore, we got on the Southwest As A Reward High School, and got a nice little certificate, I don't know if you see it yet.
At such a places.
Very, very nice that I wrote, they sent that along, we should admit. A large percentage of our students taking AP exam scores, threes, fours, and fives, like I said, it was about 86% in 2013 and 88% in 2014. Now, mind you, in this high school, they observe a practice that kind of runs counter to what a lot of people want us to do. We encourage kids to take these classes, even though they may get a one or two on that exam, we also encourage them to take the exam. Uh, so, we're trying to work off this basic philosophy that says, kids are better off struggling in really rigorous classes than they are taking easier classes, and our experience has been over the last several years in high school, that that's the best way to go. So, I remember years ago, when we used to have in Reinebeck High School these courses called AM classes, Multi-class classes, and I remember us having significant conversation about discontinuing them and putting the kids in regular REAMS classes, and saying, "Well, let's just see what happens with them," and none of those bad things that everybody thought was gonna happen, the kids didn't crash and burn, and so, we started pushing the next level, and said, "Okay, well, let's see what they might look like in a college type of class of AP," and to the extent that you can see this data right here, we've been pretty successful. Uh, so, lots of positive trends and strengths in the system. The elementary science results, obviously, very strong, 100%, middle school math remains strong and is improving, remembering that they just rolled over the curriculum, so we're just in our second year of full implementation, and we're comparing favorably in the county now as we get started, and that's at the eighth grade level, it's another little, little thing embedded in the data. Because the state had all this pushback because they were overtesting, they gave districts the option for eighth graders, if they were in the Algebra class, to not take the eighth grade exam. Well, we exercised that option, we just figured we were overtesting, so, but those kids are all advanced kids, so historically, they pushed the numbers up, so those kids weren't in the data this year. So, and even so, we still compared quite favorably in the county, so, we're optimistic for the future for that program. Uh, ELA is improving and comparing favorably in the same manner, again, those scores were depressed, but part of what we're struggling with in the system right now is trying to get a read on how the state is assessing kids and their performance against the Common Core learning standards, so that we can draw some inferences about that, and the jury spill out on that subject. If you follow what's going on out there in the blogosphere about this topic, there's a lot of controversy out there about the appropriateness of these tests, whether they're developmentally appropriate, whether or not this, I'm gonna try to simplify something that's relatively complicated, but, um, the Common Core learning standards were built in a set of learning progressions against a college readiness standard for a freshman English class or an introductory math class at the college level. And by reverse engineering, what I mean is, they built those standards backwards, all the way back to five. Now, if you think about that now, turn that around, I'm a little marvin, and I'm five years old, and I'm looking up, I'm gonna go up one step, and I'm gonna go up another step, and I'm gonna go up another step. Well, I don't think it takes a developmental psychologist to understand that children don't develop like that, right? But yet, that's how they're being assessed, as if they developed like that. So, you have to keep, again, this is my point about the appropriateness of this testing, we're still trying to get our heads around, how are you testing? Some of these items that are on these tests look like intelligence test items to me, to be perfectly frank. They also are heavily loaded with, you know, verbal reasoning skills, so that we're looking at math tests and saying, somewhere around 40, 50 to 50% of errors are just linguistic errors, because they're so linguistically loaded, the questions are. And so, it's not so much academic vocabulary, it's just simply too many steps built into a problem, and so, we're trying to adjust our instruction, and we're kind of playing at the margins of what some of these kids can do, and I will tell you, the populations that are disadvantaged by this kind of testing regime are economically disadvantaged kids, students who have limited English proficiency skills, and students with disabilities. skills, and students with disabilities. Those three populations, if you look at the statewide data, bears out what I just said, they are disadvantaged at a disproportionate rate. So whether or not it is destiny as to whether or not they're going to be successful on these college-ready exams when they're nine, remains to be seen, but clearly, they are at a disadvantage, and that is inarguable. And so what the challenge for schools is at this point is to try to figure out how to adjust the curriculum to be responsive to their needs while being developmentally appropriate and while hopefully maintaining a level of learning and a desire to be successful. So there's some real struggle built in underneath this data, and so I'm feeling pretty good about where we are at the beginning of this journey as we try to work our way through it together. Middle school science still looks good. The regent's pass rates continue to be solid. You know, I highlighted this just because I think it's worth a look. You know, the first time we did this Common Core Algebra Regents this last June, 99% of the kids passed the first time through. So, you know, if you could look at that math result back, say, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and say, you know, all right, it's not where you'd like it to be, but if you look at the summative result, those kids going through elementary school and went through the educational sequence in middle school, they came out okay. And so again, we feel pretty good about that. The regent's pass rate, as I mentioned, was very solid, as well as global history, American history, living environment, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of positive trends and strengths in that data that you see in the report there. So what can we think about? Well, overall, these programs, this is sort of why I mentioned here, recognizing and celebrating successes. You know, overall, this academic program is strong and effective across K-12, especially if you look at it over the long haul, to keep that larger context. If you look at the middle school math, as I mentioned, if you look at middle school ELA, if you look at SAT, if you look at the broad range of opportunities for kids across multiple opportunities, you know, academics, arts, athletics, extracurriculars, co-curricular with high participation rates, top 2,000, you know, in the top 2,000 high schools, top 5% resonated as a reward school, AP exam participation continues to be favorable. So how do we grow in that context? I'll just highlight a few of these things, but I think we've got to continue to look at K-12 all disciplines using multiple measures, not just letting ourselves get lured into single metrics to determine quality, and to, you know, remember that not everything that matters gets measured. You know, some of the things that we care about the most can't be measured by both tests, and that's an important part of that conversation. By strengthening teaching, by, you know, looking at standards and these new ADPR regulations as an opportunity to professionalize our discourse as opposed to a compliance drill, I think that's an important part. I think the same thing is true of effective leadership. You know, the international school licensure standards for administrators can be used as a hammer, or they can be used as a guide for deep conversation about effective leadership at the building and district level. I'm advocating, obviously, for the latter, was to, I creating positive and healthy and safe school climates that support learning, and particularly around this idea of thinking about kids as the whole child, which sort of is a strange thing that you have to say that about children, but here we are having to say that, and not want to think about them as human beings. It's a strange world I live in. So continue to celebrate, recognize, acknowledge success, create climates. I think this is an important part of the current context at these local levels, is thinking about climates of high trust, high expectations, high support that supports collaborative cultures with shared professional norms. I think that's where the discourse has to go, is at that place where we are creating, you know, values and norms around our shared collaboration that does set high expectations for ourselves and for kids, but there's high support that goes with that. That's a critical part of that conversation. I think the remedial side of the shop and response intervention is important, but I think that needs to be subservient to, if you will, and supportive of the first teaching sequence in the regular class. It's clear that you can't remediate yourself into high performance. You have to do that at the first teaching sequence with the right supports built in. I think curriculum development, it's educationally sound with governments, that's why I've advocated for this curriculum governance council, because I think it's critical. I think horizontal and vertical alignment of curriculum, that is, across grade levels, so that there's the kind of tight alignment and collaboration, as well as vertical, is critical. I think looking at the Common Core learning standards as a work in progress, instead of as something that perhaps Moses came up with while he was coming down. Sort of flummoxed me when they first came out that, you know, David Coleman and his group wrote these standards and came down and said, we figured this all out for you, here, just go do it. And people like me who have been knocking around in this business probably longer than we should have been allowed said, what? You guys aren't going to subject these to an iterative development process? You aren't going to allow the research people in the education field to research them and to determine whether they're appropriate or not? And so now there's this whole effort out there to say, okay, there's some smart things in the Common Core, because there are. There's also a lot of stuff that needs to be changed, and so we've got to do that at the local level. And I personally think, and it's a hard thing to say out loud because I'm one of these people, but if we don't do that, that's a failure of local leadership. We have to step in for that gap and do that because, you know, John King and Ken Wagner and Board of Regents are not going to do that for us. We have to do that here locally. So we've got to make sense out of this for our own programs. I think that aligning with 21st century standards makes a lot of sense to me, and looking at college and career readiness, from the point of view of not some test score, but what kind of a person graduates from Ryback High School prepared for what life holds for them, whether that be a career or college, I think is critical. I think using educational assessment soundly as opposed to some of the, again, less than desirable uses that I've seen out there. And then, of course, looking at professional development across the board in terms of how we use technology in classrooms, which because of the support of the community, we've really started to push on this area of using technology, and we're doing a lot more of that. And then looking at strong forms of professional development around how we use assessment, how we teach at the instructional core level, and making sure that we always pay attention to school climate so that all kids feel welcome, all the community members feel welcome, and the schools can be safe. We need to think about, well, why don't I stop there? All the rest of these charts, I thought I would sort of give you the beginning first and then give you a chance to ask me questions, because what I do is normally do this in reverse and kind of talk you through the numbers, but I've kind of given you a feel for what those numbers look like in that report. So do you have any questions?
Sure. If I can just indulge in a little high-level inference for a moment. I'll try, anyway. If I'm understanding what I think I'm hearing from you, there's this testing regimen that is imposed on the school district by the state as part of the Common Core process, you know, the curriculum implementation process and the evaluative process. And it's got some issues, both in terms of the appropriateness of its application and also whether we agree that the things that it's testing for are things that we think ought to be tested for. But your conclusion is whether or not we see eye to eye with the state on what the assessments are for, we're doing pretty well on the assessments. And then, on the other hand, we have what are the values that we as a district prize and think need to be emphasized. And in that area, it may not be subject to the kind of summative assessment that you've been showing us numbers for, but in that area, you think that we should continue to support that, and I would infer you think that we are doing a decent job in that area, or I think I would have heard you say something about that. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think I'm saying everything you just said. I'm sure I said it as well as you do. Yes. I might piggyback just a little bit on that school climate discussion because I think that's a topic that isn't, you know, it's in my, it's in everybody's Jordan Ben file. Positive school culture is accrued every day by people who have focused intention and attention to those kinds of things that matter. And so, yeah, there, I think I would not want to say everything is perfect. What I would rather say is that I think it's what we care about, and we need to continue to focus on that, doing a good job of measuring it, doing a good job of creating programs that support kids so that they feel successful. You know, one of the stunning insights that came, you know, so many years ago when we were doing the CED process, you know, this was probably 10 or 11 years ago, you know, somebody said, you know what, there's a direct, inexorable link between school climate and social emotional health and high levels of student achievement. And they actually feed on each other, and you can't get one without the other, and need one. And so that's kind of why I thought the way I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Go.
Well, I was just going to say that I appreciate you contextualizing it all first and then going through the numbers. I think that's been effective because, you know, the numbers, you start to look at the numbers, and you're following it, and then there's so many numbers, and you're trying to figure out, like, well, where's the meaning in these numbers? And obviously, there are things to learn from them, but as you contextualize it with other measures, as you reported on AP data and SAT scores and graduation rates and regent's performance on regent's exams, I think that's really important. So I just want to really say that, you know, I support that perspective and appreciate that over these years of, as you said, I think, a couple of years ago, this sort of tidal wave of change, that we have kept to thinking about what our values are as we have had to adjust to this new reality. And I think focusing on individual children, as you said, you know, we are the children who are most disadvantaged, how do we identify those children, and maintaining, helping those children to maintain a love of learning is something that, of course, never gets sort of really talked about by SED, but is so critical for anyone's future success. So just that whole package of an analysis of what the numbers mean in the context of our school district is really important, and I appreciate your leadership in that for school district because it's helped us to get to a place where I think, you know, we have all these opportunities for growth, but they're really reflective of the culture of our school district and a thoughtful approach to education and not just a list of things that the state of New York wants us to do. But, so, you know, thank you for that. I think this has been really informative for me.
Thank you for acknowledging. I appreciate it.
So I'm glad you left that up there. Well, you've said at the very top, the K-12, all disciplines using multiple measures, and what we've seen here is a report on the testing for the most part. What are the other measures that we have to use here, and how do we do it?
That's an interesting question. So that is going to reflect the values of this particular community in some ways. So what matters to people in some ways? So you could talk about participation in the arts, so you could talk about music, you could talk about the visual arts and participation, and thinking, okay, well, how are those kids achieving? You could talk about, you know, things like kids developing physically in such a manner that they become really interested in athletics and participate in those things. You can talk about kids as they go through the process of becoming, it's why I like to talk about kids in schools a couple of ways. One is they're either tourists, or they're citizens. Some kids are coming through school and they're kind of tourists, and they're kind of just watching, not really in. But the whole idea is to make them citizens of their own community, right? So to me, an interesting way of thinking about a metric for quality and creating a quality school system is what are those opportunities for kids to demonstrate citizenship in a way where service learning is really meaningful, it's a part of their normal ongoing experience? So that kind of multiple measures is the kind of thing I'm thinking of, using school climate data. You know, some years back, I don't know, maybe two years, three years, I don't know, three years, we did a administrative school climate survey and used that information, and it was information from the parents, from the teachers, and from the kids, that told us things about the quality of the overall climate. So there's another metric that you could build in that would say, hey, that's an indicator of quality. We get high ratings. Or we get ratings that say, hey, wait, we've got a population of kids that don't feel like they're connected to our school. And then trying to say, well, what would be the metric that would say whatever we tried to do to solve that problem actually improved that problem? So then you sort of create your own metrics as you go along. So that's what I mean by that. I don't know if that helps.
Oh, I like that.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to speak very much in favor of that shift in philosophy that you identified in the district toward challenging students to try things that are difficult for them, to enroll in AP courses, to not sort of take as a kind of absolute measure of the value that that experience represents in a student's development according to the score, right? Because I certainly know from colleagues where I work that they talked to me about students who maybe didn't receive a very high mark on an AP exam, but nonetheless felt it prepared them significantly to go on and take an entry-level course in science at the college level. So when we talk about college and career readiness, that numerical value does not represent what the student takes from that experience and goes forward with in terms of further learning. And I think that that really speaks to your point about having to look at the arc of a student's development through the middle school years up into the high school years, and where we see the kinds of iterative processes of learning, where our students arrive at the end of this K through 12 experience is very much a product of all these moments along the way. And just sort of look at each of those as units that are freestanding and have no relationship to anything else as a kind of failure or success is a complete mistake, I think. So I very much appreciate your articulating that vision as part of a kind of a position and a vision that we share in this district.
I want to go back to the assessments issue for a moment. I mean, you can have an all-night debate about the value of the assessments that the state's imposing on the schools, but from your perspective, what's the relative value of those assessments to determining how the students are performing to, in not just meeting the assessment standards, but also meeting the values that you set out or that the district has set out for its learners?
Yeah, that's a broad philosophical question. You know, some of the top-performing countries in the world, if you look at Finland, they don't do standardized summative testing in their system. Yet on the league tables for the PISA that's put out by the Organization of Economic Operation Development OECD, they're always in the top of the charts. So they don't do any of this stuff. So, you know, I could go to almost the reverse of that and look at some of the Asian communities that actually do produce the same kind of result, and they do very high-stakes testing, like high-stakes testing in a way we don't do. So you've got this, you've got this continuum internationally. I always, and I think it's the reason why I always start this presentation the way I do, I think educational assessment is appropriate in schools. I think it should be used predominantly as a formative purpose, that is, that it is an assessment of learning to determine the efficacy of the kind of programs that you put in place. But then now you're off to the races. What should those programs look like? Should they be project-based learning? Should they be sit-and-get, you know, on-task kind of learning in your seat? Should it be collaborative cooperative group work? Because your metrics are tied to your values and tied to the kind of academic program that you have. So that's a broadly construed question you've just asked. So it may be better to take that question and say, well, what kind of academic programs would you like to have? And then that would determine the quality of the metrics.
I agree, I agree with that as a general.
I'm not just kidding.
No, no. I agree with that as a general statement, but I'm asking you, from your perspective and the testing environment that we are in, what's the value of those tests to you as you formulate curriculum and evaluate how the students are performing it?
See, you're not letting me off the hook. Very nice, I'm impressed. At this stage of the game, they are of limited value, particularly the first two years of the assessment. We are still scratching our heads behind the scenes, looking at the items that they released because you do know, they don't release the tests. They only release 50% of them. So we only know half of what's on the test. I'm technically speaking, not supposed to collect those tests and read those tests because... because it's against the, the Chan custody protocols for the state because of the contract with our friends in Pearson. So, they are of limited instructional and programmatic use at this time. What our hope is, is that they, as they release more and more of that information and become much more transparent and explicit about what they test and why they tested, so that we can see whether the testing they're doing is valid testing. See, we don't get a chance to look at a lot of those text specs, those test specs, and so it's hard for us. So, they're of limited utility right now, is the answer to that question. I would say the Regents exams at the summative level stand as pretty good proxies as to the achievement level of the kids in those Regents exams. But, look at the adverse of what they do. We have exact copies of those tests. We know exactly how they're going to test. We have a prescribed curriculum that they know, we know in Global One and Global Two what is in that course. We know roughly how many items are going to be European Civ, how many are going to be African, how many are going to be Asian. We've got a, a sense of what that exam looks like. Same way, same way with American, Chem, and so on. So, there's a sense of the known. So, a lot of that three-three testing right now feels a little bit like a gotcha game to us, to be frank.
Yeah.
They're not telling us what they're doing. So, it's hard to adjust in advance. So, you get to find out how you did. You know, it's like a little birthday surprise in the bank. Also, how do we do? It really shouldn't be planned like that. Think about it from my point of view, so you can see how I think versus how they think. So, I don't know if that.
Yeah, that does. Thank you very much.
Answer to your hard question.
So, are they too difficult? Not too hard. I think we see the data, they're not academically too hard. Are they developmentally too difficult? Especially elementary kids, because the Regents are the Regents and we know what's coming?
I think that depends on who you ask, but I, I last year, I'll give you a couple of little quick anecdotes. Last year, I took the, I think I did say this. I took the fifth grade ELLA test, took it to my desk and sat there and took it myself like I was a good fifth grader, okay, who did exactly what his teacher taught him in terms of how to do close reading, how to write arguments and the structure that the state wanted, and so on and so forth, okay? So, I did it. It took me the entire time that it would have taken a child who's in the fifth grade to take that test. Now, I'm not sure what that says about me. Just telling you. I'm hoping that says something about that test.
For you, it was developmentally appropriate.
No, somebody gave you a bunch of college degrees, so somehow. So, my point is, is that, is that if I found them challenging, if my colleagues who are math teachers in the middle school find the items challenging, I've had middle school math teachers say, I couldn't solve that problem. I don't understand what that problem's asking. If I hear items that are on a fourth grade test that have so many steps in them, that unless you have, you know, an average to above-average IQ and a really strong working memory, good verbal linguistic skills and strong logical reasoning skills, you can't do it because it's asking too many steps. Or it's asking a question, a simple question about what someone, some person said to someone in the story, but they give you four paragraphs. You've got to go back and reread every single one of those paragraphs, determine the meaning of each one of those paragraphs, and then determine the relationship between each of those paragraphs and the central question that just got asked. And that's the question. So, you're asking somebody who's nine years old to go back and do that. Well, if you're economically disadvantaged, if you're a special education student, if you have a limited English proficiency, if you have a learning disability of some sort or another in special ed, you're going to find tasks like that very challenging. And so, that's what I meant by they're disproportionately being challenged. So, are some kids stepping up and meeting the challenge? Yes. But I would suggest the statewide data would tell you that the line share the kids are not. And that population that I just mentioned, I don't know if you saw the state ed data, but those kids did very poorly on this test. So, I would say it's not developmentally appropriate to some, and the data speaks to that.
Well, may I just follow it up then? Because that kind of leads us into another point that you made here in terms of those people that are marginalized by this, the economically disadvantaged, the LA kids or the LS kids. What are we doing to, to meet that need? You said we can't remediate out, but we can support and help. From our standpoint up here, if we could get the gap money, we might be able to help a little more, is that right?
I think that was political.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I'm getting these hardballs.
Absolutely.
So, if they bring, if they restore foundation aid and, and give the money back to the middle school region.
It would help.
For the gap elimination, that is a multi-billion dollar proposition from where I can tell the state.
It could help.
Additional funding. Recall, over the last, I'm trying to think of when the, when the wind started to blow in a better direction, but we spent four or five, six years cutting budgets and depressing the quality of our programs just by virtue of the fact that we had no choice but to suck money out of them. And then we had to just look for efficiencies where we could find them and try to maintain quality while they were cutting budgets. So, I think that's part of the equation. I also think that those kinds of kids, you know, I was talking to a first grade teacher this morning and, you know, we were in a planning meeting looking at curriculum for the coming school year, and we were talking about these kids that come into first grade. Well, here's the spread. We have kids who come into the first grade who can't read, okay? So, at the very beginning, we've got kids who come into the first grade who already could pass a grade level exam and go into the second grade. That's the spread. And that spread didn't go away because the state education department decided that they wanted student achievement to be everybody at age of grade level. So, what we're having to struggle with is how do we give these kids the support they need to go through that developmental arc that we were talking about? And so, I think the key response to that is building the right supports. But what we're finding, and it's an interesting conversation, is not to overscuffle through kids, so we don't want to build so many supports that would take away their independence. So, we want, we want to try to build independence so that they're self-directed learners, so that they have their own value-based decision-making processes, and the teacher isn't doing for them what they're doing for themselves. And that's a real interesting area because there's a lot of skills built into that. So, the teacher's got to become much more sensitive to that sort of thing, I think. Historically, I was trained as a special ed teacher in a previous life as well, and, you know, we were taught to overscuffle. As a matter of fact, that was your job, was to go in and overscuffle for special education students who struggled in the curriculum. So, now we're trying to reverse that a bit by saying, how do you support but not overscuffle? How do you give them the chance to, to grow and develop and maximize their potential? And so, I think that's the area we're working in. I also think it's becoming a little more sensitive to issues related to these kids who are economically disadvantaged, because I'm not sure that everybody's as sensitive as they could be to the needs of a kid who's economically disadvantaged and what that means in an educational context. When you show up to school and you've had several thousand less words spoken to you before you came to school, and several thousand less experiences of being read to or talked to about something that's unfortunately sophisticated. So, that changes what school means for you. And so, we've got to be as sensitive as we can for that issue as well. I mean, I could go a lot wrong, but I think you get the idea.
And we could use the gap money.
I, I understand there's a giant bag of money at all. I don't know where it's going. Maybe it's a reelection campaign.
So, I have a question, and I'm encouraged that our, our test scores seem to be better than, you know, county average or whatever, but, you know, looking at the numbers, we still have, in many cases, 50 or more percent of our students that didn't test proficient on the test. So, what are we required to do now to try to help them so that they're able to pass the test the next time?
Well, I, I think on the face of it, the, the rules under, I'm going to give them a little more. Under response to intervention and AIS are still in place. Districts are still required to provide, you know, support to those students through a response to intervention approach in, in AIS. So, I think those persons still should be stepping in assisting. I think due to the numbers of them, I think we're going to have to do a really close look at which kids need separate location support and which kids need support back in the classroom. And I think that's going to be a real mix. And I think what may change a bit is the, the attention to as the kids go through the first teaching sequence. Like, last year, we did a little experimentation with a couple of remedial programs, and instead of back teaching something after a student struggled with it, we pre-teach and then have the student go into class with some pre-teach, with some pre-taught skills, and we noticed that those kids did a little better. So, I think it's forcing us to think a little more creatively about the supports that we put in place. So, so the responsibility is still there to provide that support. I would say, let's see, is it here? Let me just get, oh, yeah, there it is. Let's do, all right, this is 34. It merits in that place to say that the state has actually changed what they mean by these things now. So, for example, Level One means, means not proficient, okay? Level Two means basic proficient. Level Three means proficient. Level Four means exceeds standard. Now, here's what they mean by that. Again, I, I love the way everybody plays with words in this business. But supposedly, remember I said they reverse engineered this, this program from, from high school all the way back to whatever grade level, back to third grade, back to K. So, if you score here at a Level Two level, what that means is that you, within normal limits, over the normal projection, you would score between 65 and 79 on, on an English Regents exam. So, you wouldn't score at the college ready, but you would pass the exam. Level Three, you would meet that college and career standard, and then you would score, it happens to be 80 or better on the algebra exam and 75 or better on the English reading. So, that's how it's calibrated. So, the way they're even measuring and naming these levels now is different. So, if you look at that screen, you'll see that we have a significant number of kids that are in that Level Two range that are sort of on track in, in that long arc sense. So, we need to figure out how to continue to support their growth, so you can think about them differently than you would, let's say, this group across the bottom. So, that's a, that's kind of the basic idea.
Just another couple of comments. One is that, you know, clearly you're saying data shows that economic, there are groups of kids who are disadvantaged in these tests, and that's a, a real issue. Of course, I also think that like any nine-year-old sitting for an hour and a half during the test might just be like bored. This issue about like, are you a tourist or a citizen? I think that was a great way to express like, that we want our kids to feel like they actually are part of this education process, not just test takers. And I think we have to really be careful that even, you know, the, what the state has pushed us into is what is an important discussion here tonight, but that revolves around like all the numbers and tests, that we are trying to contextualize, but the state doesn't. And your comment about, you know, making sure that we don't slip into this, we're not, you know, sort of seduced by this single measure and what do we do, is something we have to be very attentive to and vigilant about. Not, you know, just even tonight, we're spending a lot of time talking about tests, and we can maybe imagine conversations that are like, what's your report about how it is that teachers identify the multiple issues that kids come to school with because they're economically disadvantaged or because of, you know, mental health issues at home or because of English, not the English proficiency? So, like, if the state asks for that report, that would be like another conversation we'd be having than the numbers. So, I just think, you know, from my standpoint, in terms of creating climate of high trust type expectations, high support, I think that, you know, our role as board of education is to really be sure that we are doing that all the time as we not become like overwhelmed by the numbers and what they are telling us. Because, you know, the worst fear we've always, I always had, and I think many of the teachers here and yourself is we don't want to be teaching to test. We don't want to be doing that backwards thinking. That's like, how do we get 39% more kids to score as threes and fours? That's not education. Like, that's just not, you know, what it means to grow as a person and be ready to be an adult in the world. So, just commenting on what we're even doing is sort of just like, you know, I appreciate the, the, the analysis because we have to be vigilant about it, or we'll just, you know, kind of slide into how are we doing numbers-wise?
Sure. Well, you'd like to, you'd like to say, and we do say this around here a lot, I mean, you do high-quality curriculum development, you do high-quality restructuring, you put high-quality programs, you know, the testing to be what it is. You try to put all your energy into SI, because, you know, what I, I like to say, you know, what you, what your intention and not intention is focused on is what grows. You spend a lot of time talking about this one thing, everybody's going to be focusing on that one thing. The more narrow the metrics, the more corrupt the data. There's actually a very famous social science rule called Campbell's law, if you're interested in it. You know, the more narrow the metric, the more corrupt the metric becomes. So, it's a, it's a really critical conversation to really kind of, let's be focused here.
But, and this support for Deirdre say, couldn't, couldn't agree more. But, they define and, and use the word fail and failing schools, and the failing schools are those that are based on data. They're not based on wonderful kids, they're not based on the, the environment that they come from, they're not based on any of that. And successful schools are reported based on data. So, we need to be, you're right, we need to be really careful about it, and I think we are here. We could share.
Well, that's why I do a little proing about, you know, I don't want to be shameless about it, but if you look at the summative result of our educational programming, you feel like you're responding to that desire, but you're trying to do it the right way, if you will.
I just want to add that it seems to me as often as possible, really reiterating the fact that these numerical metric, these metric measures can be misleading, even if we think that's enough to tell us to be complacent, right? To sort of look at very high test scores might not tell the whole picture about how a student is learning and developing and growing. And one thing I worry about is that parents themselves might overassign meaning to those measures and maybe not recognize other things that they need to be concerned about in the development of their child. I think we're beginning more and more kind of sense of like how these children are being from a very early age assessed in these ways. And I think as much as we can supplement that picture, show that it's only one part of the picture, it's incredibly important.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Marvin, for your very comprehensive presentation and.
Thank you very much.
A lot to think about for the next few weeks, definitely.
Thank you.
I love that you took the test. This is great. I think that's fantastic.
That's a killer.
I wanted.
Oh, it's a paragraph, you're doing. What, paragraph two? What in paragraph two?
There were some activists who really challenged the governor, and I came to, you know.
Take the test.
And take the test. I think that would be.
He would call off the test in the middle. And say you didn't. Get on the test.
How I did? That shall never be known. I, I repealed enough. Took me a long time to do.
Did you actually have your test scored?
No, I actually didn't score. I mean.
Yeah, I scored.
I scored by own test. That's how we handle that problem.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, so let's move on. Is there any good news? I'm sure there's lots of good news.
Fall season, sports season, stuff.
Yeah.
Monday.
On Monday night, some of us.
Triumphs.
Triumphs.
It's great to see the kids back, it really is. It's a wonderful drive up here to see the place buzzing if they're not anymore.
And the wireless projects running on?
It's, it's running on, yeah. They, it's, it's not, you know, it's not finished yet, but, I mean, they've done a ton of work on it and got a few bugs to work out, but we've got a couple weeks before school starts.
Aye.
Flash hour is aye. And a motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Be resolved if the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President and superintendent of schools execute the 2013-14 Implementation Certification Form for the Annual Professional Performance Review for classroom teachers and building principals pursuant to Education Law Section 3012(c) and Part 30-2 of the Rules of the Border regions.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I have a comment, if I may. I'm about to abstain on this, and I just want to explain that you come from where I come from, and I know we're trapped in this, and I mean no denigration of the hard work that people have put into this, but this is not the way to evaluate teachers.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, with respect for your comment, Rick, I just wanted the board to know that what you're voting on tonight is authorizing Mark and me to sign off on this form, which essentially says, we did what we said we were going to do vis-à-vis our state-approved APPR plan, you know, for good, bad, indifferent. We did what we said we did, and that's what our signature means on this piece of paper. We did this last year, this past year, we did the ad at least, had the opportunity to run a full cycle from the start of school year in September right through the end of the year. And, you know, I think we've learned a lot about the process, and I think we're in better shape to move on and make it a more meaningful process going forward than perhaps we thought we were going to be able to two years ago, when we put this together pretty much out of a significant level of ignorance about the process and mechanics of the process. So I just wanted to emphasize, while I don't disagree with
I know you don't.
... that this is a regulatory requirement that we need to accomplish. So I don't have a visit from Commissioner King, which might be interesting in itself.
Yeah, so I totally respect that you're abstaining, and I think it's an honorable position. I think that, you know, I'll vote in favor, so we can do the regulatory thing, but, you know, I'd certainly give consideration to examining how we look at this APPR in the future, because having been on the negotiating team for the district, and we did, you know, negotiate that with the RTA, I sort of had a lot of familiarity with what that looked like, and the fact that the state does invest so much. And that was a piece of this whole student achievement report that we didn't talk about, about the state investing so much in these results in evaluating teachers, which is really the hook that's made it really challenging for certain districts to really grapple with it. So, you know, I agree, there's a lot in there that's highly problematic and actually mathematically suspect. That being said, I think that I appreciate the work that Joe, you're doing with the administrators and the teachers' representatives to talk about, like, how do we make this meaningful and have our flavor to it? Because that's really, you know, with those constraints, making it something that's useful to us is important. So, you know, I guess I'm seeing that, but I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, if I could expand on that just a little bit, could bring everybody else in the board up to speed. We started a conversation in late spring with our teachers' association to look at our current APPR plan, and look for ways to, you know, like we try to do with most of all of the initiatives or the mandates that come down to us from Albany, you know, we try to grind that eyes, then, you know, it's a phrase that we've been using for a lot of years now, you know, make them our own, and make them as meaningful as we can within the constraints of those mandates. And I would only share with the board that while we have not negotiated changes to the current APPR plan for 2014-15, we have had some, I feel, very exciting conversations about potential changes to our APPR plan. And I think everybody around the table is feeling like, you know what, we just, we need to take the time to do that right. You know, developing the first process was done within a climate that, for no particular person's fault, was not the ideal climate to be having the kinds of discussions you need to have, a meaningful evaluation process that not only assesses teachers, but that actually helps teachers become better teachers. And I think if you can start doing those things together, I think it gives some efficacy to the process and the conversation that I've been hearing around that table over the three or four times that we've met since late spring, and have met as recently as this morning, or this afternoon, rather, it's very exciting stuff. Whether we realize all of the ideas that we put out on the table, maybe not, or maybe not in one year, but we've already carved out a pretty sizable chunk of work that, together, we want to look at different ways of assessing students, other than using standardized assessments, which involves training teachers on how to construct their own assessments in ways that are rigorous, and that are focused on assessing the curriculum, and a lot of exciting things. So just so you know, right now, we'll be rolling our APPR plan over into 2014-15 as it exists now. But I would anticipate, we made a commitment this afternoon, that we would make whatever changes we could agree to research and make before the end of this school year, so that when everybody leaves for the summer, everybody knows what will be different for 15-16. So I'm buoyed by the professionalism and the collegiality of that conversation. It's actually been the same breath of fresh air as that is the one we experienced during our recent negotiations with the RTA, and during our communications meeting with the RTA in late spring. It's actually very exciting. I also think part of it is, we've been through two cycles of this, and I think people are feeling a little less anxious about the unknown, and I think that's put everybody in a frame of mind where we can have, you know, we take a deep breath and say, okay, how can we work a plan that does what we all want to do? For example, you know, training teachers on how to do a better job of constructing teacher-made assessments, even if they pull the plug on the APPR tomorrow, that would still be worthwhile, a worthwhile activity for teachers to engage in, because they assess students all the time, and have been since before APPR was a catchword. So we're trying to leverage the process to really get some meaningful bang for our buck here. So this next year, this coming year will be the study year, and we already have our assignments that we've given out, so. But right now, we'll be on hold for the coming year, and we're in the APPR the way we had this year.
Just for my colleagues, so you know I'm an honorable guy, I told you I was going to do this beforehand, so it's not like I'm broadshiding them.
Yeah, I know.
And I absolutely respect, I think the window is open, there's a chance for a leap of faith here, and it's because of the efforts that you and the rest of this board have put in. So I'm going to come in and be on board here, but I'm not going to vote for this tonight.
Sure.
I understand.
I just want to thank you for taking the stance you have, and for giving us the opportunity to make this a priority moving forward, and also, Joe, for sharing with us the kind of state of thinking about future agreements.
Okay, any other special? All with a favor? It's, goes without flash hour, Burns, Albert, extensions. Walker? Okay. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recognition of the superintendent of schools to appoint Catherine Smith to the grant-funded civil service position of teacher aide assigned to Oakley Middle School at the effect of September 3rd, 2014, at a rate of $16.11 per hour for a six-and-a-half-hour day in accordance with the anti-salaried schedule for 2013-14, with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I have a question. What does it mean to say that this is a grant-funded civil service position?
It means it's not being paid for out of the general fund, it's being paid for by a grant.
Which grant is that?
Um... Oh, jeez, which one? I don't know, it's one of Richard's grants, I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it's the same grant. It's a federal grant. 94142. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's money there for the one year. It's future years going out. If we want to do it in the following year, he's using carryover monies from his grant to pay for this position, because this position was not in the budget.
Right.
If the position continues the following year,
We'll have to budget for it.
We will have to budget for that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's goals for the district for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I have a comment, if I may. I'm about to abstain on this, and I just want to explain that you come from where I come from, and I know we're trapped in this, and I mean no denigration of the hard work that people have put into this, but this is not the way to evaluate teachers.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, with respect for your comment, Rick, I just wanted the board to know that what you're voting on tonight is authorizing Mark and me to sign off on this form, which essentially says, we did what we said we were going to do vis-à-vis our state-approved APPR plan, you know, for good, bad, indifferent. We did what we said we did, and that's what our signature means on this piece of paper. We did this last year, this past year, we did the ad at least, had the opportunity to run a full cycle from the start of school year in September right through the end of the year. And, you know, I think we've learned a lot about the process, and I think we're in better shape to move on and make it a more meaningful process going forward than perhaps we thought we were going to be able to two years ago, when we put this together pretty much out of a significant level of ignorance about the process and mechanics of the process. So I just wanted to emphasize, while I don't disagree with
I know you don't.
... that this is a regulatory requirement that we need to accomplish, so I don't have a visit from Commissioner King, which might be interesting in itself.
Yeah, so I totally respect that you're abstaining, and I think it's an honorable position. I think that, you know, I'll vote in favor, so we can do the regulatory thing, but, you know, I'd certainly give consideration to examining how we look at this APPR in the future, because having been on the negotiating team for the district, and we did, you know, negotiate that with the RTA, I sort of had a lot of familiarity with what that looked like, and the fact that the state does invest so much. And that was a piece of this whole student achievement report that we didn't talk about, about the state investing so much in these results in evaluating teachers, which is really the hook that's made it really challenging for certain districts to really grapple with it. So, you know, I agree, there's a lot in there that's highly problematic and actually mathematically suspect. That being said, I think that I appreciate the work that Joe, you're doing with the administrators and the teachers' representatives to talk about, like, how do we make this meaningful and have our flavor to it? Because that's really, you know, with those constraints, making it something that's useful to us is important. So, you know, I guess I'm seeing that, but I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, if I could expand on that just a little bit, could bring everybody else in the board up to speed. We started a conversation in late spring with our teachers' association to look at our current APPR plan, and look for ways to, you know, like we try to do with most of all of the initiatives or the mandates that come down to us from Albany, you know, we try to grind that eyes, then, you know, it's a phrase that we've been using for a lot of years now, you know, make them our own, and make them as meaningful as we can within the constraints of those mandates. And I would only share with the board that while we have not negotiated changes to the current APPR plan for 2014-15, we have had some, I feel, very exciting conversations about potential changes to our APPR plan, and I think everybody around the table is feeling like, you know what, we just, we need to take the time to do that right. You know, developing the first process was done within a climate that, for no particular person's fault, was not the ideal climate to be having the kinds of discussions you need to have, a meaningful evaluation process that not only assesses teachers, but that actually helps teachers become better teachers. And I think if you can start doing those things together, I think it gives some efficacy to the process and the conversation that I've been hearing around that table over the three or four times that we've met since late spring, and have met as recently as this morning, or this afternoon, rather, it's very exciting stuff. Whether we realize all of the ideas that we put out on the table, maybe not, or maybe not in one year, but we've already carved out a pretty sizable chunk of work that, together, we want to look at different ways of assessing students, other than using standardized assessments, which involves training teachers on how to construct their own assessments in ways that are rigorous, and that are focused on assessing the curriculum, and a lot of exciting things. So just so you know, right now, we'll be rolling our APPR plan over into 2014-15 as it exists now, but I would anticipate, we made a commitment this afternoon, that we would make whatever changes we could agree to research and make before the end of this school year, so that when everybody leaves for the summer, everybody knows what will be different for 15-16. So I'm buoyed by the professionalism and the collegiality of that conversation. It's actually been the same breath of fresh air as that is the one we experienced during our recent negotiations with the RTA, and during our communications meeting with the RTA in late spring. It's actually very exciting. I also think part of it is, we've been through two cycles of this, and I think people are feeling a little less anxious about the unknown, and I think that's put everybody in a frame of mind where we can have, you know, we take a deep breath and say, okay, how can we work a plan that does what we all want to do? For example, you know, training teachers on how to do a better job of constructing teacher-made assessments, even if they pulled the plug on the APPR tomorrow, that would still be worthwhile, a worthwhile activity for teachers to engage in, because they assess students all the time, and have been since before APPR was a catchword. So we're trying to leverage the process to really get some meaningful bang for our buck here. So this next year, this coming year will be the study year, and we already have our assignments that we've given out, so. But right now, we'll be on hold for the coming year, and we're in the APPR the way we had this year.
Just for my colleagues, so you know I'm an honorable guy, I told you I was going to do this beforehand, so it's not like I'm broadshiding them.
Yeah, I know.
And I absolutely respect, I think the window is open, there's a chance for a leap of faith here, and it's because of the efforts that you and the rest of this board have put in. So I'm going to come in and be on board here, but I'm not going to vote for this tonight.
Sure.
I understand.
I just want to thank you for taking the stance you have, and for giving us the opportunity to make this a priority moving forward, and also, Joe, for sharing with us the kind of state of thinking about future agreements.
Okay, any other special? Okay, all with a favor? It's, goes without flash hour, Burns, Albert, extensions. Walker? Okay. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recognition of the superintendent of schools to appoint Catherine Smith to the grant-funded civil service position of teacher aide assigned to Oakley Middle School at the effect of September 3rd, 2014, at a rate of $16.11 per hour for a six-and-a-half-hour day in accordance with the anti-salaried schedule for 2013-14, with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I have a question. What does it mean to say that this is a grant-funded civil service position?
It means it's not being paid for out of the general fund, it's being paid for by a grant.
Which grant is that?
Um... Oh, jeez, which one? I don't know, it's one of Richard's grants, I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it's the same grant. It's a federal grant. 94142. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's money there for the one year. It's future years going out. If we want to do it in the following year, he's using carryover monies from his grant to pay for this position, because this position was not in the budget.
Right.
If the position continues the following year,
We'll have to budget for it.
We will have to budget for that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's goals for the district for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Joe, for taking, you know, the workshop this board did on this issue of our goals, and then, you know, kind of coming up with really good goals, and then people commented on, and then refining them further. You know, I feel like they actually sort of also reflect some of what, in terms of opportunities for growth, that slide that Marvin had, a couple of them at least really speak directly to that, including celebration of educational progress, but planning that's driven by our mission, vision, and core values, as opposed to just through data. And, you know, I'm just really pleased with the work you've done, and I guess my only question would be, I mean, you drafted that based on our input and discussion, so maybe just speak to the confidence you have to take these, and, you know, you operationalize that. So just maybe your thoughts on that.
You'll find that in the board meeting.
I would be highly confident that this sort of dovetails with the work that administration has been sort of planning for this year.
Well, you know, I think one indication that is a number of the guys should point it out, and with the comments that Marvin stated this evening, and I will tell you that there was absolutely no collusion between the two of us, and the reason I mention that is because I think administratively, we're on the same page. Without, I didn't show him these goals and say, hey, just so you know, this is where we're, this is where I think the board is headed, nor did he show me this presentation two or three weeks ago and say, hey, this is kind of what I'm thinking based on the data that we're collecting. I think it demonstrates that there is a certain unity of purpose in the school district that's reflected by these goals this year, and by what people are going to be doing, whether you adopt these as your goals or not.
Right.
I think this, as we've talked about before, I think adopting these goals sends a message to the administrative team, and to the teaching staff, and everybody else in our school community that this is what we're about, and we're talking the talk, and we're walking the walk here. And I, you know, I have a pretty high degree of confidence that I'll be able to craft my goals to support the board's district goals, and that the administrators will do
and the teachers' representatives to talk about, like, how do we make this meaningful and have our flavor to it? Because that's really, you know, with those constraints, making it something that's useful to us is important, so, you know, I guess I, I'm seeing that, but I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, if I, if I could expand on that just a little bit, to bring, to bring everybody else in the board up to speed. We, we started a conversation in, in late spring with, with our teachers' association to look at our, our current APPR plan and look for ways to, you know, like, like we try to do with, with most of, not all of the, the initiatives or the mandates that come down to us from, from Albany, you know, we try to blind that eyes then, you know, it's a phrase that we've been using for a lot of years now, you know, make them our own and make them as, as meaningful as we can within the constraints of those, those mandates, and I, I would, I would only share with the board that while we have not negotiated changes to the current APPR plan for 2014-15, we have had some, I feel, very exciting conversations about potential changes to our APPR plan, and I think everybody around the table is feeling like, you know what, we, we, we just, we need to take the time to do that right. You know, developing the first process was done within a climate that, for, for no particular person's fault, was not the ideal climate to be having the kinds of discussions you need to have a meaningful evaluation process that, that not only assesses teachers, but that actually helps teachers become better teachers. And I think if you can start doing those things together, that it gives some efficacy to the process and the conversation that I've been hearing around that table over the three or four times that we've met since late spring and have met as recently as this morning, or this afternoon, rather. It's very exciting stuff, whether we realize all of the ideas that we put out on the table, maybe not, or maybe not in one year, but we've, we've all already carved out a, a pretty sizable chunk of work that together we want to look at different ways of assessing students other than using standardized assessments, which involves training teachers on how to construct their own assessments in ways that are, that are rigorous and that are focused on assessing the curriculum, and a lot of deciding things, so. So just so you know, right now, we'll be rolling our APPR plan over into 2014-15 as it exists now, but I would anticipate, and we, we made a commitment this afternoon, that we would, we would make whatever changes we could agree to research and make before the end of this school year, so that when everybody leaves for the summer, everybody knows what will be different for 15-16. So I'm, I'm buoyed by the professionalism and the collegiality of that conversation. It's actually been the same breath of fresh air as that is the one we experienced during our recent negotiations with the RTA and during our communications meeting with the RTA in late spring. It's, it's actually very exciting. I also think part of it is, we've been through two cycles of this, and I think people are feeling a little less anxious about the unknown, and I think that's put everybody in a, in a frame of mind where we can have, you know, we can take a deep breath and say, okay, how can we, how can we work a plan that does what we all want to do, for example, you know, training teachers on how to do a better job of conduct, constructing teacher-made assessments, even if they pull the plug on the APPR tomorrow, that will still be worthwhile, a worthwhile activity for teachers to engage in, because they assess teachers or students all the time and have been since before APPR was a, was a catchword, so what we're trying to leverage the process to really get some meaningful bang for our buck here, so. This next year, this coming year will be the study year, and we already have our assignments that we've given out, so. But right now, we'll be on hold for the coming year, and we're in the APPR the way we had this year.
Just for my colleagues, so you know I'm an honorable guy, I told you I was going to do this beforehand, so it's not like I'm broadshiding them.
Yeah, I will.
And I, I absolutely respect, I think the window is open, there's a chance for a leap of faith there, and it's because of the efforts that you and the rest of this board have put in, so. I'm going to come in and be on board here, but I'm not going to vote for this tonight.
Sure.
Understood.
I, I just want to thank you for taking the stance you have and for giving us the opportunity to make this a priority moving forward, and also, Joe, for sharing with us the kind of state of thinking about future agreements.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all with a favor? It's Rosenbaum, Flash Shatter, Burns, Del Bear, extensions, Walker? Okay. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Catherine Smith to the grant-funded civil service position of teacher aide assigned at Bulkeley Middle School effective September 3rd, 2014, at a rate of $16.11 per hour for a six-and-a-half-hour day in accordance with the anti-salary schedule for 2013-14 with a 26-week probationary period.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa?
I have a question. Um, what does it mean to say that this is a grant-funded civil service position?
Uh, it means it's not, it's not being paid for out of the general fund, it's being paid for by a grant.
Which grant is that?
Oh geez, which one? I don't know, it's one of Richard's grants, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I think it's the same one, isn't it?
It's a federal grant.
94142.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So there's money there for the one year. It's future years going out, if, if we want to do it in the following year, he's using carryover monies from his grant to pay for this position, because this position was not in the budget.
Right.
If the position continues the following year.
We'll have to budget for it.
We will have to budget for that.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's goals for the district for the 2014-15 school year?
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? Deirdre?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Joe, for taking, you know, the workshop that Stuart did on, on this issue of our goals, and then, you know, kind of coming up with really good goals that then people commented on, and then refining them further. You know, I feel like they actually sort of also reflect some of what, in terms of opportunities for growth at SLI that Mark had. A couple of them at least really speak directly to that, including celebration of educational progress, but planning that's driven by our mission, vision, and core values as opposed to just through data. And, you know, I'm just really pleased with, with the work you've done, and I, I guess my only question would be, I mean, you drafted that based on our input and discussion, so maybe just speak to the confidence you have to take these and, you know, you operationalize that, so, just maybe your thoughts on that.
You'll find out in the board meeting.
I would be high level confident that this sort of dovetails with the work that administration has been sort of planning for this year.
Well, you know, I think one indication of that is, is a number of the guys who pointed out, and with the comments that Marvin said, stated this evening, and I will tell you that there was absolutely no collusion between the two of us. And, and the reason I mention that is because I think administratively, we're, we're on the same page. Without, I didn't show him these goals and say, hey, just so you know, this is where we're, this is where I think the board is headed, nor did he show me this presentation two or three weeks ago and say, hey, this is kind of what I'm thinking based on, on the data that we're collecting. I, I think it, I think it demonstrates that, that there is a, there's a certain unity of purpose in the school district that's reflected by these goals this year, and by what people are going to be doing, whether you adopt these as your goals or not. I, I think this, as we've talked about before, I think adopting these, these goals sends a message to the administrative team and to the teaching staff and everybody else in our school community that this is what we're about, and we're, we're talking the talk and we're walking the walk here, and I, you know, I have a pretty high degree of confidence that, that I'll be able to craft my goals to support the board's district goals, and that the administrators will do the same, and that there is already, you know, discussion about various things, like I mentioned earlier with the, the APPR, that this is the kind of work we're doing. So, it was actually a little, a little easier than I thought it might be, just because it seems like we're, we're on the same page and we're heading in the same direction. I, I appreciate the, not only the, the workshop that we had on this a month or so ago, but also the feedback that, that various members of, of the board have submitted to me over the course of the last several weeks, and, and I think the more of that conversation we had at, at the last board meeting, and even, you know, digitally, helped me to, to crystallize these thoughts, and I hope they reflect what you feel is important as a, as a board.
Um, moving forward, assuming we adopt these this evening, what's the timetable for the administrative and the superintendent's goals?
Well, the timetable would be for me to, to develop mine first, I mean, I will share these with the board, I will share them, you know, I'll post them online, and I'll share the, the district goals with the wider community, you know, right now, or as the school year is, is commencing. I, I like to say that I would have my goals or draft goals to you by September 9th, but I don't want to be that ambitious, because the start of the school year is rather hectic on a normal, you know, on a normal timeframe, but certainly by the second meeting in September, I would plan on having a draft of my goals to you, and I'll also have the administrative staff. Give them consideration to their own goals, initially within the context of these board goals, and then next within my, because I, you know, my goals will, will make it a little more specific, you know, we'll call out specific things that either we already have on the drawing board to do, or that we will be putting on the drawing board to do, they'll develop theirs. I would say not too much after I, I get mine done.
And do you anticipate that your goals will be formulated in terms of indicators of progress as we've done?
I, I use the same format that I used.
Okay.
Last year, that's, that's my plan at this point.
Okay.
If I run into a snag, I'll, you'll be the first to know. But that's my plan.
Thank you.
I'm so pleased that it looks like we're about to embrace these goals, because it will really give us an opportunity to present a clear and articulate statement at our open houses when we meet with our parents and families, members of our community, students. I am so pleased, and, and I just want to thank leadership in the board and also, Joe, for helping us together at the stage that we have.
That was essentially, I was going to say, I was reminded of that, and then actually we'll have to coordinate those open houses and who's going to speak at those open houses, but I, I like that phrase also, Joe, that you just said that, you know, we can see there is a unity of purpose, so that our goals and the kinds of things that administrators and teachers have been doing, I think that's an important message to get across and, and meet some of our goals by actually communicating that as well, you know, perhaps when our president speaks to the staff, and our presence even at the staff opening on the first day of school. So it's nice to have them done ahead of the beginning of spring.
It's great, really, it's, it's the earliest we've done, we've been able to do them in a while, and.
Yeah.
It feels good to have, have them taken care of. As a reminder, we will be having an open house program on September 2nd, Tuesday, for those of you who might be able to attend, the program starts, starts at 8:30, we have, you know, staff starts gathering around 7:45, 8 o'clock or so for coffee, and that's a nice opportunity to introduce and, and meet and greet, and then we'll start the program at 8:30, and we're usually done by 9:15, 9:30. So for those of you who can join us, everybody's invited.
And that's here?
That will be the auditorium.
In the auditorium, okay.
If you can, you understand.
I'll mention that I do plan to speak to these goals, you know, when I speak to the staff, so.
Yeah, was that, I can't remember if it was that open house last year, that a couple of teachers who I know and who maybe recommended that perhaps board members wear name tags to that, that because people don't know necessarily who were board members and also new staff, like, you know, there wasn't a lip.
But also the teachers should also, and employees should also wear them too.
Name tags. So, you know, maybe it might be too much to have everybody wear a name tag, but maybe people could at least know.
Let's do that.
It's a nice.
Let's do that.
And I'd also point out, just so everybody knows, that all the staff are there, it's not just teachers. So support staff are there, as many of them as can be there, everybody's invited, so.
Great, right.
Okay. Okay. All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the extension of the appointment of Rosemary Vessuna as a long-term substitute in the position of family consumer science teacher at the Bulkeley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, at the pleasure of the board, having been made effective on or about March 26, 2014, initially through the end of the 2013-14 school year, through January 30 of 2015, at the salary of Step 13 MA plus 15, $83,823 pro-rated in accordance with the 2014-15 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Alice Dolce, family and consumer science teacher at the Bulkeley Middle School.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion?
When is it appropriate for us to ask the superintendent, how close are we to a full staff at this point, now that we're making appointments?
It could be anytime that a board member would like to ask that question. I believe at this point, we have, we, we still have a seventh-grade long-term substitute science teacher to hire, I had hoped to have a recommendation by this evening, but I do not, so. That, hopefully that will happen at the September 9th meeting, and I believe we have two long-term substitutes at the elementary school level that we're waiting for some certification clearances to, to occur before we're even applying them. So we're actually, right now, we're actually three down, all three of the long-term substitute teachers.
Are we meeting next week?
No. So I'm not planning on it.
I know.
I mean, if I have to, if I have to send up a flare and call for an emergency special meeting, you'll be the first to know. We'll, we'll see how that works out. I, I think we've got a, we've, I think we've got a backup plan for the short term, but. So that's, other than that, we're, and maybe a bunch or two were, were former staff.
Thank you. All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Be resolved that the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education calls upon the New York State Legislature to end capitalization adjustments when they adopt the New York State's 2015-16 annual budget.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion?
I was not at the last meeting, but I'm glad that this is here, and it's important for us to, to, you know, make a statement, support the other members, some news got right, it was promoting that.
Air, air.
Absolutely.
Okay, all with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2013-14 budget transfers in accordance with the Board of Education policy 6150 for the school year ended June 30 of 2013.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve non-unit salaries for 2014-15?
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Christine Belcher to the civil service position of secretary of the superintendent of schools, effective on or about September 3rd, 2014, at an annual salary of $51,900 pro-rated with a 26-weeks probationary period.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion? Lisa?
It's kind of bittersweet that Meg is clerk pro temp this evening. I'm, I'm happy for Joe that he's found somebody to step into your very large footsteps, but we are going to miss you very, very much.
Truth be told, Meg can hardly contain herself.
He's like both.
I don't blame her, she has been a great doctor in this tradition, and I will, nobody will miss her more than I will.
I know that.
All with a favor? Oh, Rick, did you?
I just want to consider yourself hugged.
All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the coaching staff for the 2014-15 school year, volleyball JV, Mary McCarthy, $2,513; modified TBA, $2,259; field hockey JV, TBA, $2,579.
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the additional mentors for the 2014-15 school year?
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the common history of the two of persons?
Some moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? All with a favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes.